Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this work session for the City of Triaddale Budget Committee and the Urban Renewal Agency Budget Committee. And for December 5th, 2023, if we could have a roll call, please.
Sure. Mayor Lauer.
Here.
Council Rittman.
Here.
Council Kazlo. Council One.
President.
Council White.
Here.
Council Wittrin.
Present.
Council Glantz.
President.
Tanny Staffenson.
President.
Jean Ben.
Here.
Chris Barney. Victoria Rizzo.
Here.
Rich Allen.
Here.
Heidi Timberman.
Here.
And Paul Wilcox.
Here.
Okay, with that, we have a quorum, and we can proceed with the next order of business, which would be electing Chair and Vice Chair for the budget season. And at this time, I'd like to open the nominations for Budget Committee Chair.
Chair Staffenson, I'd like to nominate you again for showing a lot of commitment and willing to do the work.
That's second thought.
Okay, other nominations for Budget Committee Chair? Do you want to do this as a Slater individual? Okay. So at this time, I take a motion to close nominations for Chair?
I move we close nomination.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, at this time, we'd like to open the nominations for Vice Chair.
I nominate Victoria Rizzo.
Okay.
Second.
And we have a motion, a second, for Victoria Rizzo. Other nominations for Vice Chair of Budget Committee?
I'd like to nominate Jordan.
Um, we-
No, can I do that? He's Counselor now.
He's a counselor, so we usually don't.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
Can I nominate Paul Wilcox? This is Jeffrey.
Yes, you can. Is there a second for that?
Second.
Okay. All right. And other nominations for Vice Chair? Okay, motion to close.
Second.
Okay, motion, a second to close nominations for Vice Chair. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that carries. Okay, and now the voting. Um, all those in favor of Tanny Staffenson for Chair?
Aye.
Aye.
Host? Okay. Now you guys are collectors for punishment. Okay, and now we will move to Vice Chair. And we have Victoria Rizzo and Paul Wilcox. So first, we will do, we'll do a roll call for that.
Did you want me to do one at a time, or ask them who they vote for?
Whichever's more convenient for you.
One at a time.
One at a time? Okay, let's go ahead and call the roll then for Victoria as Vice President. Vice Chair, excuse me.
Vice President.
I don't have it laughed at.
Mayor Lauer.
Yes.
Council Rittman.
Yes.
Council One.
No.
Council White.
Yes.
Council Wittrin.
Yes.
Council Glantz.
No.
Tanny Staffenson.
Yes.
Jean Ben.
No.
Chris Barney.
Yes.
Victoria Rizzo.
I'll pass.
Rich Allen.
Yes.
Heidi Timberman.
Yes.
And Paul Wilcox.
Yes.
Nine yeses and one to the no's. So.
Okay. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You're back in the saddle. Okay.
And you didn't even have to vote for yourself.
All right, everyone, thank you for that. And now we will move on to Mr. Yung.
Great, thank you, Jenny. First of all, I want to thank all of you for your service. Every night at the meeting is one last night at home, even with the advantages of Zoom. I still have to be distracted from your home life, so thank you so much for the time you spend here. And it is very critically important, your time, because you are the body that holds the staff accountable and oversees how over $60 million was just spent. And it's highly important for you to be able to spend that time to make sure those tax dollars are being spent wisely. As for that spending, we are blessed to have a great staff who are very responsible to treat your budget and the money in that budget very carefully in their spending. It's a culture that we try to foster around here. Just because you have it budgeted doesn't mean you have to spend it, and we have to justify our expenses to you, the Budget Committee. On top of that hierarchy of watching over our finances, Eric Mueller, who is a wonderful Finance Director, a real blessing to the city. I can tell you from personal experience that he is a person of great skill and great integrity, and we are very lucky to have him. And you'll see him on display tonight as he gives you his half yearly meeting presentation. But beyond Eric, it is the whole staff who helps administer this budget because they all play a part in spending under that budget. And they deserve a lot of credit for the healthy financial situation that the city continues to be in. A couple of things to note. Number one, the city overall is doing well financially. We, as usual, as usual, maybe remind you of this, as usual, we are spending less than we budget. And we are blessed that income is above expectations. Always a good place to be. Spend less than you're authorized and get more income than you thought you were going to have, and that's the way last budget year was. As you will hear, we continue to uphold our promise because that is something that is something that we appreciate as staff that on faith, you trust us that we will not go over budget and spend more than our income, and we continue to do that. If you look at the information you got before tonight's meeting, you will see that of the 24 different funds that make up our overall budget, 23 of those budgets spending was less than budgeted. The only person on the outside there was, the 24th one, was only over budget by $1,500 or so, and that was our URA Debt Service Fund of $210,000. So I think that's pretty good, 23 under budget, one slightly over budget. So we ended up, as I told you a couple of months ago, oh, approximately $2 million in ending fund balance, which means is the money that we have in excess income over expenses for the budget year 22, '23. So the last year ended really well, even more of that from Eric. So knock on wood, we're going to continue to spend less and receive more income than we budgeted. Secondly, the future does hold one expensive concern more than others in our budget. 2024, your next year's budget, will be the last budget under our current law enforcement and fire contracts with the City of Rushham and Multnomah County. And as some of you are aware, we already are working hard on how we should approach those negotiations and the information that we're going to need. And there'll be a presentation next Tuesday night before the Council from the Public Safety Working Group on what they would recommend for things we need to start doing to get ready for those negotiations. Those are the two biggest expenses in our general fund, law enforcement and fire. And we are one of the few cities in the metro area that actually uses a general fund to pay for fire. Most of the cities, especially those like ours in Rushham, Fairview Village, who have a smaller tax base, that's a, per long-term tax base, have gone to fire districts, and that's one of the options that that committee is looking at, and they're suggesting that the Council pursue. So that is going to be the biggest concern after next budget year, is one of our contracts going to look for those services. But on the other hand, we have positive income news. Next budget year will be the first year since Amazon came on the tax rolls that we will take that property tax payment and put it directly into the general fund. As you recall, the last five years, we've taken that money and we've put it into the fund to help pay off the service debt on the urban renewal property, for the cleanup of that property and the acquisition of that property. So next budget year, '24, '25, that approximately $800,000, which represents 12% of our property tax income, we will get an additional $800,000 next year through general fund. So that will be a nice hit, in addition to our 3% annual increase in property tax revenues. And on top of that, new developments are always a great way to try to beat the inflation bug that is hitting us all the time, especially right now in our economy, and we're limited to the 3% annual increase. New properties are always something that help in that regard. The Foxridge Department's 165 units, which is just down the street here, should be finishing up sometime this year and hopefully come onto the tax rule next year. City Hall has been put back onto the property tax rolls and at the end of it remodeled. That will be a much greater value than it was before and being taxed. The Kendall Building, right across the street, if you've noticed, is going through a huge remodel. It's not vacant any longer. It will be a great new addition in downtown. So it's things like that that add more value to our property in the city that allow us to collect, you know, more than just the annual 3%. And the other one that may not be available for three or four years but is coming, we have our, in the early plan review stages, for a very large battery storage facility. I mean battery, I don't mean double A's or D's or things like that. I mean a huge 200-megawatt battery storage facility over by Amazon to bring in the renewable energy, the wind and the hydro from the gorge and be able to store it for when it's needed. And so that's going to be several hundreds of millions of dollar facility. It's going to be going over there off of Sundown Road. So it's developments like that, as I said earlier, are going to continue to help us with our budget and income over the years. Thirdly, and finally, tonight is not about decisions. Tonight is about hearing from Mr. Mueller regarding on what happened last year in terms of our actual income expenses, what this year is doing so far, what the economy looks like. We're always available to answer any questions you have. Tonight, I would encourage you not to get too much into the weeds with your questions because tonight's more about bigger picture and about a report. But as usual, if anybody wants to sit down with Eric or I or both of us and go through any issues in the budget, any expenditures in the budget, we are more than happy for you and answer any questions that you have about the budget. And so I say all of that to say thank you for your time and thank you for the energy you put into reviewing the budget. It's critically important to how we operate the budget that we are accountable to you. So thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Yung. I want to thank you and for being here, taking the time away from your families, and all the work that goes into preparing for the budget season. And it's an honor to serve as your Budget Committee Chair, and I hope that I withhold that in your eyes. Lot of information's going to be coming at you. Please ask questions, get your questions answered. And some of this, I don't always get it, and I know some of us don't always get it, and we need to ask questions, we need to understand it. It's an expectation. You know, when you know what's going on in here, you can explain that to your neighbors. They might not like the answer, but at least you can tell them what's going on. And that's better than, I'm on Budget Committee, where I really got no idea. Doesn't make you look good or doesn't make any of us look good. So I think we can help ourselves that way. Please raise your hand if you have a question, and especially those of you out there in Zoom land. And let's not use the chat feature. We tend to get going a little sideways when we do that. And if I don't see you, just throw something at me. I just get my attention. It's not that I don't want to call on you, it's that I don't see you. So tonight, we're not going to be taking any formal budget actions because it's a work session. But we are going to be looking for consensus and direction as far as what we're, what we want to see in April and what we're going to see. And we're going to learn a lot about what's going on to this point. And so does anyone have any questions before we turn it over to Mr. Mueller? No questions out there? Okay. All right, with that, no further ado, Mr. Eric Mueller, Finance Director.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Can you out in Zoom hear me? I want to make sure the microphone. Okay, good. Trying to figure out light on, light off. Okay. There we go. Okay. Got that. So purpose tonight, inform, answer questions, update, glance back at last year, look into the future, get you thinking about April of '24. Ground rules, I cover this every year. I apologize for those of you who've been on for a while, but local budget law is what controls our actions as a Budget Committee, specified 36 pages or more in ORS Chapter 294. Budget Committee's duties are to receive the proposed budget and the budget message, hear and consider testimony from the public regarding the budget, and by statute have to approve the budget and the property tax levies, but those are done at the official meetings in April. In order to be official meeting, there has to be a specific deliberate published notice of a certain format for a certain number of days in the designated paper. This, as the Chair mentioned, is a work session tonight, so this is an update preseason before the formally noticed ones. There are some limitations. Have general discussions all you want. You just can't get into, well, I think we should increase the funding for this particular program, or we should reduce the funding for that, or we should, you know, some other particular specifics. Talk about general organization, fund structure, vision, goals, general economic projections, et cetera. And certainly any questions about last year or even the current year's budget, because it's already past the Budget Committee's workload. It's just not anything about the coming year budget, and it looks like I forgot to fix my slide there. It should say '24, '25. Anyway, I always miss one or two of them when I'm updating it, but. So and as I mentioned, not specific programs or specific increases, decreases, et cetera. So again, general discussion, relative priorities. You want to put more into the municipal golf course and the lessons of the water slide. You know, those are the kinds of relative discussions. So questions about ground rules? So financial overview. This is the budget cycle '22, '23. This is what I'm contending with right now with the auditors, trying to get that rassled to the ground so I can bring it to the Council in January. We're in the middle of the implementation monitoring for the current year, '23, '24, and we're going to, starting the budget process. Travis is already after me for worksheets for public works projects for next year's '24, '25. So that's where we are in the, in the cycle. Last year turned out fine, sort of the endemic era. This year, looking good so far, should turn out okay. Beginning next year, July 1, we should see more of the impacts of the slowing economy. And we'll get into some of that as we go forward. So last year, how did it turn out? Sarah got this mailed to you, and she also emailed it to you, so I don't have the screen to see it on the screen, but this is the recap of how last year turned out. Ray touched on, on some of it. You can see how we did budget to actual in any given fund. We also have a snapshot from an operating standpoint. Did we spend more than, than we had in terms of revenue? And if we do, that isn't necessarily a bad thing, particularly for the capital project funds. That's what they're for, is we build projects. So we will accumulate funds in an SDC fund and then do a project. So frequently, you'll have that kind of, of reduction and, and spend down. So the general fund, which is of always of interest, is how does it, how does it turn out? And it's, of course, a maddening process because we're trying to budget stuff 15 months before the month, the year is going to be over. What we budgeted versus how the, the year turned out from an operating standpoint. We ended up on the net 4.2 positive. So as we deal with the very last column, the actual 630, we had a beginning fund balance of 8.4. That was 1.5 million more than what we had budgeted 15 months earlier. Number of factors, but you know, we ended up with more of the beginning fund balance. That's a contribution to fund balance. Revenues, we came in above, 2.1 above what we had budgeted for revenues, which, you know, I don't usually overshoot it that far, but I typically, you know, under budget on revenue, you know, and over budget on expense so that we don't exceed those things. We want to have a positive variance. Spentitures, we came in 2.1 under what we budgeted, which overall, from a budget standpoint, was 5.8. So in that column there, we see that we had an ending fund balance of 10.75. It's distorted a little bit from a few audit entries that I had to contend with that reduce it. So that takes us to the, the graph. We ended up way up there at the top. We had, where that yellow star is, was what 15 months earlier had been the budgeted projection or where we thought we would end or what we budgeted or planned to end. So came out much better, of course, than what, what, what we had planned to be. So this year, which is the flip side of the page that you, that you got, I want to stress again that it's only 33% of the year. It's a snapshot. It's through October. Again, it's, you know, just a point in time. There aren't any particular factors about it, but it's as much as I can really get close to for this meeting because November, I don't have anywhere near all of the entries that we're going to have for November activities, so I can't really compare November. So October is about as close to having a preliminary as I can get. You'll see in the street fund there in the middle, you know, it's so far for the year, you know, it's spent 39% of its budget and it's 33% of the year, and you know, it's 20, only received 20% of the revenue. And it's overspent by 1.2 million so far this year. Well, that is because of, of course, the construction season, and as you folks know, and they have to try and do the coating and re, recoating of the asphalt in your neighborhood, and they have to schedule all of it. And then if we get a rainstorm, they've got to reschedule it. It's condensed to a very short period of time. We have to do it in summer. So of course, it's the first part of the budget year, so we're spending money like mad trying to get that done. So we end up with more expenses early in the year. That, of course, will, that will wash out and continue over the course of the year. The other one that we always talk about is the general fund, the, the big expense greater than revenue so far this year, and that goes back to property tax revenues being the 48% of the revenue for the general fund. And through October, we have received zero, because of course, property tax bills, the roll is not set until the 15th of, of October and gets sent out. But we'll look here. So Ray had talked about property taxes, so we're, that's my estimate of where we're going to show up with Amazon. There's a number of moving parts. We'll have to wait and see how exactly the assessor chooses to apply certain asset categories when they put them on the tax rolls from being on the exempt on the enterprise zone. Because there's real property pieces, and then there's what they refer to as business personal property, which is essentially all the conveyor belts and computer equipment and all that kind of stuff, which in the Amazon circumstance, that's a big chunk of the installation versus maybe just a typical warehouse. And maybe more of the building is a larger part of the value. In any case, we'll, we'll keep an eye on that and, but we expect a meaningful increase. So property taxes, and I know this is a question that Counselor Glantz has always enquired about wanting to make sure we know where we are and property taxes are we getting. So we got that to zero through October in order to have the, the numbers comparable. But as the property taxes start coming in, typically throughout the course of the year, the county assessor, we get one property tax deposit into our local government pool account from the assessor's office each month, except in November. Then we get them every week. But it takes them a couple of weeks to get ramped up to get started because of the, the due date is November 15th, so people start paying. Mortgage companies typically will pay the entire amount upfront because they want to have that, that potential impact on their lien taken care of. So, you know, and through, through the Friday, December 1st, which is when we got our third weekly deposit for this year, I ended up with $5.6 million since, from zero earlier in the, you know, one month earlier. So to reassure you that, no, it's not that we have zero property taxes coming this year. We just didn't have any by October, which is, which is typically the case. The hotel motel tax is another one that we had started looking at, in particular in the context of, of the COVID impact. That's the year prior to, 1819 was the last year prior to. Of course, COVID hit in basically the fourth quarter, fourth fiscal year quarter for the 1920 in the March-April timeframe of 2020 is when, of course, we went into the big lockdown, and of course, that, that had a big effect. So you can see the, the big drop there. It started to recover in 2020, 2021, sort of the back half of the year. 2022 or 21, '22, again, recovered above and beyond where we were pre-pandemic. Last fiscal year, '22, '23, again, another increase. Through October, '276, it's, you know, basically one quarter's worth because the, they, they report, all the hoteliers, they report on a quarterly basis after the quarter's over, so we've gotten one quarter in. It's seasonal, it's right on track. Oh, there we go, yeah. County Business Income Tax or the BET. It's a bit more volatile, just in terms of looking at pre and post because the, the county adopted changes to the, the Business Income Tax Statute during the, just as the pandemic was, was hitting. So it had a kind of a strange impact. But anyway, the, again, the top year is pre-pandemic. Then we got into the first year of the pandemic. The year following, and following that, that's when we started to see the change that they implemented in 2020 on their rates and the total amount. There was also a kind of a carry forward because, if you recall, for two years in a row, the state deferred the deadline for income tax deadline from April to July for everyone. Well, most of the filers filed along with when they did their state filing, so a lot of the, a lot of that finally got dragged out into slop, sloshed over to a subsequent year. In any case, '22, '23 came out, what, $18,000 less than the year prior. I think that's primarily because there was carryover from two years earlier into that year. And then this year, it's, we're, you know, it's coming in, it's very lumpy. There's at least one month each year, sometimes two, where we get no deposit because the BET is reconciled and paid out by the City of Portland's Bureau of Revenue through an IGA with the county. And if they get behind, they sometimes will just not pay for a month. And then they'll catch up the following month, which has, has happened once this year, where we had a month, they just didn't have any deposit for us. Also, because there's a lot of them are, a lot of the payers are annual filers rather than quarterly. We tend to get more than 50% of the total revenue of this line item after I've already presented the budget in April. It's maddening to try and budget for on my part because I don't know yet what we're going to get for the year, but anyway. Again, looking good. This is a chart I stole out of the county, just had an update from their economist on their revenue projections, and this is their, the, the bit that we were just talking about that they charted there. Part of that shows their, their bit reform change, what they're projecting. Continued upward slope, but a, a reset for the 2024 year. This is sort of their graph that they, they'll produce. I was going to say monthly, but as I said, they don't always produce it monthly. Note that at the, I guess, what is that lavender line? I guess it's the top one. It, it was slightly above last year's orange line. The red one will, you know, just, we're in the very beginnings of it, so we'll have to see how it sorts out when we get to the end of the year. Those are all general fund revenues. One of the other questions early on regarding things, impact related to the pandemic, was the gas tax. Of course, this is what funds the street fund, where we talked about where we just were paying out all that to, to do the street maintenance when the weather was in the right season earlier. So again, the top line is the pre- the weather was in the right season earlier. So again, the top line is the pre-pandemic kind of frame of reference. You know, pandemic hit the last three months of the nineteen twenty year. Twenty-one twenty twenty twenty-one increased. Twenty-one twenty-two, again, another increase and continued to rise. It's lags a bit. It tends to be the, you know, the the month goes on, the then the all the gas stations basically have another two weeks that they have to then file the reports. And then ODOT then takes thirty days to reconcile it. So I'm basically six weeks from the end of the month that the revenue is forward before they ever give it to me. So I'm, it's always a lag trying to figure out where we are. So that that really only represents probably three months rather than four months there for the state gas tax. And basically, I think that's the same for the the local one. It tends to be another week behind because that's a local IGA that they do with us locally. Again, they're on track. The state one, the composition and the behaviors aren't tracking identically because, again, the legislature made a change in the composition of the gas, state gas tax, not last session, but the session before. Whereas local gas tax, ours is strictly a per gallon tax. Whereas the state one has got the apportionment, it's got a miles component, it's got another component related to trucks as well as the the largest piece, the per gallon tax. So questions on any of that? Certainly, we can come back to any of it later on. Well, I guess I should stop that so you can see if there's anybody raising their hand, waving their hand, trying to throw things at you through Zoom.
Okay, Sandy, go ahead.
Hey, I know I might have bad questions. I'm curious why there's two, two point two million in increased revenue? And is this something that would change the forecast? Or is this something? I'm just wondering where it came from and if it's expected to continue the next six months? Or if increased expenditures in the next six months or so would impact that?
You're talking about last fiscal year?
Uh, the one I, the one you were talking about, yes.
Okay. Yeah, last fiscal year. I will dig in the folder while you ask your other question. I'm not sure if I have with me what I might need to try and answer that. I'm sure I don't have a completely definitive answer.
I'm also curious about the two point two million under budget. We've had both increased revenue and we had under budget. And then on the property taxes, on the projections for what's come in so far, is that in line with what happened last year?
For property taxes last year, and and I didn't go back and look at it multiple years, but by the end of December, we had received ninety-four percent of the year's property taxes for the general fund. And, you know, it's essentially on track. We've, you know, we've already got, was it five point six million of the six point four that's budgeted. So, you know, we're we're rapidly closing in on that ninety percentile threshold. I certainly expect that to be the case by the end of the calendar year.
Okay. And then on the local gas tax, how much impact does something like, I'm not sure which one it was, one of the truck stops closed for remodeling for a while? Would that have impact on our local tax revenue, local gas tax revenue?
I would have to say, first of all, excuse me, the sign was still up. The gas was still being pumped. It was just their building for restaurants administration, but gas was pumped the whole time.
Okay, I'm just, as I drove by, it looked to mostly be closed. It would not be a place I wouldn't go into necessarily.
Well, I usually went in there because I didn't have any competition. And she's talking about, is it the loads? Yeah, truck stop there.
Truckers know it's open.
Yeah, the trucking side is, we use a pretty busy. It's the consumer side that Sandy knows are pretty empty times.
So the the short answer is yes, they, I'm sure they likely had a lower amount of patronage because of that very thing, just like you, it looked like it wasn't open, but they were open and but they would have contributed less to our local gas tax because they pumped less fuel. So I'm just trying to glance at some of my notes on capital expenditure category, again, across the general fund. I don't have the detail by by division. You know, we were one million eighty one thousand dollars under in that category. So that's half of the two million dollar under budget or under expenditure, you know. And then there was another one point two that I show under for materials and services. And again, I don't have the the individual line item recap for you. On the the revenue side, I know that, you know, have that with me. Yeah, sorry, I don't have what I would need to try and give you a more particular on which revenue line items were were over. I know we were slightly over on property taxes.
But we will have in next January, in January, we are going to be presenting the audit for this year. So it will have the good layout, Eric, one of the actual line items that show decreased income.
Not at that detail level.
Ah, okay.
It it has it at a fund level for across the entire government-wide financial statement. So I'll look around some more and see if I can find something, but I I can't give you a more detailed answer on that particular question right at the moment.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council Glanz. Paul Wilcox.
Well, yes, thank you, Chair Saverson. I have a question on the spreadsheet from the last fiscal year. There's a few examples of this, but I'll I'll use the most extreme example for my question. Under sewer reimbursement fund, you had a, well, anyway, there's a difference of half a million dollars between what you expected and what you received. A couple of questions. What accounts for the extra five hundred thousand? And where is that five hundred thousand part if it isn't spent?
Well, for that one, that the the SDC funds, which are the reimbursement funds as well as the improvement funds by each of the utility categories, as you see up above, I mean, some of them were established earlier and some of them were established later, which is why they're not all together. But those are both the the two parts of SDCs. The SDCs are driven based on development activity. And so it's always a speculation on our part as to what developer, what what development might occur in the coming year. And without knowing, you know, I I usually end up budgeting at a lower level. And then if we have a big project come in like Eagle Ridge, you know, they may have half a million dollars of sewer SDC that they need to pay for one hundred and seventy-six department apartments, when I had only budgeted forty thousand as a more or less as a, I don't know, not a placeholder per se, but as a as a low amount for small development occurring year to year. And the other challenge is it depends on the type of development. It isn't necessarily all of the water, sewer and stormwater will equally grow. It depends on the nature of the development, how much each of them might be assessed from an SDC standpoint. And the money is sitting in that in that forty, in that's forty-four, yeah, Fund forty-four, that revenue that went in there, it's sitting in there along with whatever previous balance was in there. And so at some point, when we do a sewer infrastructure project that is eligible under the SDC rules, we we could be able to spend that money on a capital project for the sewer infrastructure. We can't spend it on water. We can't spend it on parks or, you know, some other non-sewer related activity. The sewer fund. Yeah, the sewer fund, I mean, that that money went in there and it currently has a balance of about three point four million dollars. So that half a million was was added to it last year to to that balance. So at some point when we do a four million dollar sewer project, we'll spend money out of that fund and and spend it down. Other questions?
Mr. Wilcox.
No, that answers my question. Thank you. Thank you.
Back the slides?
Yes.
Okay. Come on here now. Get my mouse to. There we go. Okay. Work. There we go. So general economy, cross currents in the current economic indicators. We've got ones that are pointing positive, some that are showing contraction. There's strong employment. Then again, there's inflation. There's eleven Federal Reserve rate increases, record number in a short period of time. Housing impacts, we've got the economic push and pull, good job openings, goods and services spending, the very, the different fiscal stimulus packages, the CHIPS Act, as well as the, in my mind, ironically named Inflation Reduction Act that was adopted that pumped another trillion dollars into the economy. Those are all pushing on the demand side. Supply side is is constrained. So measured by gross domestic product, of course, you see the big swing there when we had the lockdown from from the pandemic and then the huge snapback, et cetera. But the far right-hand side where the the last quarter was a surprise upside on the on GDP, which components is important to, for a moment, to take your ask, there's been lots of commentary in the market about consumer spending, about how resilient the consumer is and in the face of it. And the GDP components help illustrate that that lavenderish kind of bar, the one that's on top of the the stack. That's the one that represents essentially consumer spending. Business spending is sort of the next, I don't know what color that is, light blue maybe. Government is that the the base one there in that line or turquoise color, I guess. But as you'll see, the the big chunks of that spending, particularly over the past year, have been from the consumers. They've been driving the GDP and economic growth, which has been part of the challenge for the Fed as keeping the demand up, which is continuing to push on our friend inflation. And the inflation trend has been slowly downward, continued shift from goods to services, particularly travel. I saw one quote where the leisure travel came back with a vengeance was the was the terminology. Constrained labor production, there was a there was a large drop in labor force participation as a result of the pandemic. Ended up being a lot of folks that were had had retirement on the horizon, decided just to stay at home after the pandemic ended and went ahead and made retirement. So there was a number of a greater amount of baby boomers that retired maybe early than than originally projected, which has constrained the labor force participation, again, available labor for the jobs. Supply chain has improved. Inflation peaked in June of last year at nine point one. So, you know, those are ugly numbers there in the middle of the chart to the eight. But over here on the the far right, we're we're getting back down here, you know, the three point four was, I think, the the last measure. So it's getting there. The Federal Reserve rate hikes are having an impact. It's causing demand to slow, which is helping to bring inflation down. The challenge is that doesn't necessarily bring the price down. It brings the rate of increase month to month down. But it doesn't mean that, you know, the the price goes back to what it was four years ago. It just stops increasing. So and then I think I showed this the last time as well, but this Consumer Price Index components, what you experience as inflation is really unique to what your composition of spending is. Because the way it's weighted, forty-two percent of it is related to housing. Well, if you own your home and have a thirty-year mortgage and you're you're year twelve of paying your mortgage, you're not a renter facing a rent increase. You know, your your housing cost isn't going up month to month. Whereas, you know, food and beverages, then you're going to get hit at the marketplace. So again, it's 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 depends on your your individual experience, depends on your composition of spending based on the the different bat parts of the basket. So the, as I mentioned, the Federal Reserve rate increases, you know, that was the federal funds rate there. They had it, you know, of course, brought to down near zero as part of the pandemic relief. And then they've, again, brought it up faster than ever in the Fed's history. It's not the highest it's ever been, but it's gone the distance, that distance faster than it's ever has in its history. Of course, the forecast side is is the big debate among all the economists and the Wall Street watchers about when is the Fed going to pivot? You know, the argument now is, well, they're permanently on pause, even though the governors are making noise about, well, that they haven't committed to be on pause, but that they're on pause. And now the the issue is, okay, when will the economy soften enough that they'll start to reduce rates to give the economy a little more support? It's, you know, there's a whole range of them. There's some folks that I I think are just overly pessimistic that are talking about it being March, getting the first reduction, overly pessimistic because they believe the economy is going to worsen so badly that it would require a cut that quickly. I think it's more realistic. It's going to be the latter half of next year, if that soon. Housing has been, of course, particularly impacted by the rate increases as well as housing demand. Pending home sales dropped its record low. It goes back as far as they tracked it in October. And that's a combination of, of course, affordability and supply. As I mentioned before, if you have that thirty-year mortgage and, you know, you're you're twelve and it's three and a half, four percent, you're not eager to buy a new house and trade that three and a half mortgage for a seven and a half or eight percent mortgage. So you and like lots of other folks that might have thought about trading houses or deciding you're just going to stay put, which constrains supply. Again, and then, of course, affordability is the other side of it with the mortgage rates. They kissed, I think, during the, didn't stay there for the average, but I think there was a two days where it kissed the rate above eight percent. And of course, again, nobody wants a rate at that when they can think back just to, you know, twenty-one, when they were near record historic lows. So Troutdale Home Values, you know, the, a lot of it is impacted by there's lesser transactions just because of what I talked about. So it tends to, you know, skew some of the numbers fairly flat from what it was when I looked at it the last time. And this is just a chart, sort of the of the, I was going to say affordability or lack of affordability. But the the ratio is near historic highs. Median home price is sixty-three percent more expensive than, well, they they went back to nineteen eighty-four, which is is a bit. But it's that forty percent of income is needed for the quote average house, which makes affordability just very difficult, particularly for first-time home buyers to qualify. So the consumer, you know, it's wages are rising. That's part of what's contributing to inflation because of the the tight labor market. Jobs are plentiful, but nobody's happy. You know, it's as as the quote was, it's a good time to be a worker, a bad time to be a consumer, but like most of you, you're both. So you may have gotten an increase at work, but you also are still shocked by what a dozen eggs costs. So the, you know, this is one Wall Street Journal article that I saw that I thought encapsulated it real well. You know, the You know, the economy is great, why are Americans in such a rotten mood? Well, part of it is the larger context, wars, politics, et cetera. Wall Street Journal has a survey in August, and you know, sixty nine percent of the country's headed in the wrong direction, really isn't based on economic indicators, but attitude wise or, you know, people's mood. You know, the dichotomy of people feel good about their jobs, but they're, it's more offset by high inflation. Peaked at nine point one last year, it's fallen to three point seven, I think that was the previous month, but anyway, you know, three point seven. You know, the Conference Board did a survey and found that workers generally have a higher job satisfaction because because of the pandemic, a lot more businesses implemented and have retained a greater degree of flexibility for workers. So job satisfaction is high, and that's also causing the quit rate that they look at to decrease. And then, you know, again, the analysis is that inflationary periods, both prices and wages rise, but people dwell more on the prices and they quote feel worse off. So again, the economy is great, why are they in such a rotten mood? It's sort of these behavioral or attitudinal factors rather than maybe the absolute numerics. You know, a lot of the past year you can ignore, but you see out here where, okay, gas prices went, you know, five dollars a gallon, everybody was frustrated with the inflation, but they've come down considerably since then. But they're not back down to two dollars a gallon, which is what people long for, that's what they think of. And so they're still grumpy about paying three dollars a gallon because they remember when it was less, even though they're forgetting that it was five dollars a gallon more recently than it was two dollars a gallon. Pandemic, we, as they refer to it, is the excess savings, all of the support mechanisms, all the fiscal money that was pumped out through all the various federal programs in particular, accumulated in terms of as excess savings, this two point one was a number of different analyses that have been done, came up in that range. And that, that's orange area is where they've been spending, the consumer's been spending more than their monthly income, well, where are they spending it from? They're spending it from that excess savings that they accumulated during the pandemic. And that orange spending is that's what has kept the consumer and consumer spending so resilient in the economy because they had not quote monthly income to spend, but they had savings to spend. Conference Board, the U.S. Consumer Confidence Survey, again, shows it's not uncommon, but it's it's a bit wider than it usually is. Their black line is, you know, and it's higher, people's response in terms of their personal current circumstances. So, you know, their current circumstances really aren't all that bad, you know, up there, but they're pessimistic about the future. That's the lower blue line, which again feeds into the rotten mood, feeds into the expectations on the economy. Conference Board, again, that consumer index, but then this also overlays the small business survey, small business operators are much more pessimistic about the economy and the future of the economy. They're, of course, dealing with the struggle of inflation, they're having to pay more for labor, for help, they're getting, of course, pushed back from their customers in terms of the cost increases and potentially rent increases for their storefronts. All of those things make it life difficult for the small business, and they have a more pessimistic outlook on the on the future based on their their surveys. On the other hand, larger businesses, the IASM manufacturing side, again, it's increased first time in seventeen months. They're building again, they're growing again, they have more optimism, it goes back to those cross currents in the economy. The Fed is bringing down economic growth to bring down inflation, and that doesn't happen smoothly or evenly across the entire economy. You get different factors going in different directions, but it's generally coming down. Employment, we touched on it multiple times, you know, jobs are abundant, the Oregon unemployment rate's three point six, near a near a record low. So economic summary, Conference Board, their forecasts continue to grow, but the the economy is going to buckle under these, as they refer to them, mounting headwinds early next year, a very short and shallow recession. Well, a recession was predicted all year this year and just never quite arrived. Goes back to all that pandemic savings that was spent, all that consumer spending kept the economy chugging, but that money is getting spent down to where that excess savings isn't around. So the, that being, as I said, dissipated pandemic savings, the increased interest rates that the Fed put in place, all those things are beginning to have that contraction. You know, they're seeing going from two point four percent GDP in this year to, you know, a third of that next year. That's going to be pretty meaningful contraction over the first six months of next year. Doesn't necessarily mean that we'll officially tip into a recession, but certainly a slower rate of economic activity. So depth, diffusion, duration, those are all things that impact how you measure a recession. Conference Board leading indicators, you know, again, in the near term, we see the economy having a downturn as part of all the monetary policy efforts that the Fed's So, U.S. economy is inch closer to the so called soft landing, you know, meaning that the Fed has been able to bring down inflation. Typically what happens when the Fed raises stuff in the classic business cycle is they raise interest rates, it creates a recession, there's big layoffs, unemployment rises dramatically, and the economy resets. The soft landing, or golden path, as one of them referred to it as, is to being able to tame inflation without triggering a recession. Remains to be seen whether they're going to pull it off. Job openings just reported for October. The openings dropped, which means that there's a demand for labor decreased, which will help reduce some of the wage inflation demand. Doesn't mean that it increased in unemployment, just means that there were fewer open jobs, which ultimately you would have to get to to continue to bring down that that push. So, economy, economic growth is slowing, it's not going negative, it's not crashing. Supply chains have largely recovered, continued strong consumer demand, we'll see how long it continues. Labor market remains strong, but it's softening. The rate of inflation is declining significantly, but price levels still are elevated. Again, the Fed may have engineered a soft landing. Stop sharing, so.
Counselor Glantz.
I have a question on the, excuse me, Consumer Price Index components. There was a note that the most recent annual reweighting was in December of twenty twenty one. What is reweighting and why does it matter?
Well, I'm hesitant to get too far into the weeds with it, but they they adjust the basket that they measure because the Consumer Price Index is not actually a dollar figure, it's a numerical index of of the changes in prices. And they change the weighting of how they view what consumers spend and how much of their income they spend on particular items, whether it's shifting less on fuel and transportation and more on meals away from home, which is the restaurant category. I I don't know what the particulars were when they changed that weighting, but, you know, it's part of them disclosing that, okay, if you're going to compare back prior to that date, there's also a difference in the basket. It's not astronomically different, but of course, it is different for the statistical geeks that dig into that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Brent?
Yeah, um, you were talking about the consumers spending, utilizing the savings from the pandemic. I've heard an awful lot about consumer credit debt reaching a record high in excess of one trillion dollars. And I see that eventually going to have a major impact on on the inflation and also the economy in general. And when the consumers have an excess of a trillion dollars and they're paying twenty to thirty percent in interest rate, there's going to be some serious defaults and God knows what's going to happen.
Yeah, well, part of the recent analysis about one of the, I didn't include it here, but one of the quotes from the, some of the research I was doing, they talked about that there was a record amount spent during the time after Thanksgiving through Cyber Week, et cetera, this year from consumer spending for the holidays. But they cautioned that it also included a record level of buy now, pay later purchases, similar to the credit card issue as well. And so it appears that there are, that people are going back to the pre pandemic days of when the savings rate was minimal versus what happened during the pandemic and for for much of the time afterwards. Where we're we're going to see the impact of the interest rate change soon, sooner than with the consumer is going to be second half of next year when there's an awful lot of commercial, commercial real estate loan refinancing that's going to come due. Because a lot of buildings, particularly hotels, have a cycle where they have to refinance. And of course, they, their current financing is based on, you know, something that is five percent from multiple years ago, without, you know, it's going to be significantly higher. That's likely to be the place where we're first going to see credit defaults, where where stuff is going to have to get restructured. It's a question of whether there's enough of a contagion that it spreads to other parts of the banking portfolio. But that's, it it tends to be more of a regional bank issue rather than a national Chase Manhattan, Bank of America, Citibank type of issue. Thank you.
Counselor Whitaker?
Just also as a, another anomaly out there this year, we also see banks collapsing and banks consolidating like never before as well. And I'll just say the same sentence, I think we all feel as we did last April, there's just a lot of financial uncertainty out there. And as we go into next April, we're just all feeling the same uncertainty that Eric is expressing. We're just all leaving the office.
Other questions?
Sorry, Counselor White?
I saw that slide where it looked like an almost one percent decrease in Troutdale housing, or, I know in two thousand eight was the last time that housing prices dropped, but it also lowered, it actually lowered people's property taxes. Are we budgeting or anything like that?
No, because the 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 gap between real market value and maximum assessed value is, on average, thirty, thirty percent, depending on the property and the class of property. So real market value can dip for several years while assessed value continues to rise at a three percent rate. One of the issues that people complained about during the post two thousand eight great recession was that their their house prices, their market value went down, but their property taxes went up from last year. And that's because there was still such a gap between those two numbers that it continued to go up. We're not facing that here in Troutdale in any great degree. I went through an economic presentation that was presented to the Portland City Council as they're looking at their budgeting, particularly trying to deal with their transition costs and so forth. One of the issues they're running into goes back goes back to those hotels and commercial real estate downtown. You're seeing a thirty two percent drop in market value for commercial properties in downtown Portland. Well, it's not going to take more than a couple of years of that before it's going to crash into what the what the assessed value rate is for those types of properties. So they may not be impacted next year, but it depends on the the year following.
They're going to have to have mandatory mortgage burden meetings soon. Forty percent of their income, that's kind of scary.
Yeah, most, most people can't qualify. The Freddie Mac Fannie Mae guidelines, I believe, are still capped out at thirty seven percent. So, you know, they're not going to be able to get the conventional mortgages, you know, that first time home buyers need. So it 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 just has made affordability very difficult for first time home buyers, that in addition to the lack of availability. So those non first time home buyers who may have equity from having sold a house, have money for a down payment, cash buyers, et cetera, they're keeping the market supply tight because they're swooping in and buying what limited properties are available because they can actually buy them and or finance them. And again, people don't want to give up their three and a half percent mortgage for a seven and a half mortgage, so they decided, you know, I think we'll just remodel rather than move to that other house.
Mr. Allen?
So as long as we got you here, I just have to ask. It always seems to me that my, and I I thought this on occasion, that my assessed value is higher than my actual real market value. And I was wondering, do you happen to know what formula they use to determine that?
Well, it would, it would have to be the opposite. Your assessed value cannot be higher than your real market value, based on the state tax statutes.
Do you know the formula they use? How they come about their assessed value?
Well, the assessed value, the, what's referred to as the assessed value for any given year, so for the actual just rule, it is, the formula is a hundred and three percent of the prior year's assessed value. Or the real market value, whichever is lower. So that's the formula. So, you know, simplistically, I can't do math in my head, but, you know, a hundred thousand dollar house goes to a hundred and three thousand dollars, you know, in assessed value if it was a hundred thousand last year. But if the market value of that house dropped to ninety five, well, then it's going to drop below that one oh three assessed value. But typically, market values for single residential homes in in our change property ratio area for the for the city, like I say, where there's usually about thirty five to forty five percent headroom between the assessed value and what the market value is going now, you know, like, over the past year, that number had gone down one percent market value on that quote average, which, you know, is not necessarily going to be applied to everyone's house. Again, that number is also a bit skewed because there's a lower volume of transactions that tends to skew the validity of the average.
So it's based on some kind of market research?
The 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 real market value is, the assessor has a formula that they apply for different classes of real property in different portions of the county. I don't, I don't know that they, that that's, I don't know if that's published per se. But the the assessed value, again, for the current year is the lower of a hundred and three percent of what the taxes were last year or what the real market value is, whichever is lower.
I appreciate the insight, thank you.
Sure. So we're charging forward?
I guess you guys need a break.
So budget outlook, twenty four, twenty five. So budget outlook, twenty-four, twenty-five is, you know, essentially maintain current services, avoid layoffs, continuation of projects, operations, activities, status quo. Some are, are choice internal, many are external. Items that are our choice, quote unquote, our service levels, spending initiatives, new programs. U R A development assistance, items not in our control, property taxes, the economy, legislative changes, both the state and federal, purse cost increases. Budget impact items, who makes the decision depends on when it occurs. You know, before June thirtieth, the changes between now and June thirtieth are the council. After July first, or the next budget cycle would be the budget committee this coming April. So again, one of the biggest impact items and the other part of tonight's meeting is the urban renewal area. So, you know, that's a familiar overview. So the U R A has two parts, unlike the cities funds that, you know, we've got many different ones, there's basically just two. There's the general fund and there's the debt service fund. The debt service fund only function is to receive the tax increment from the county assessor and to repay debt. Can't do anything other than those two things. The riverfront rule fund, which is basically the general fund for the rural agency. It's got a hundred eighty-eight thousand in cash currently, it owes the city two hundred thousand in TIF back debt. There's another five million outstanding for the non-TIF back debt. Here we go. One point five million dollar loan, that's non-TIF back, that's the Business Oregon loan due to the city. And then there's a pending one point five million dollar loan from the city for the trail construction. I'm just having, we're still working through the I G A with Metro, which is on the council agenda for next week. And then we'll be able to move forward with that and so forth. So the, of course, the riverfront trail is the, the big project for the coming budget year, and of course, it will take into the following year as well. Riverfront Trail and Park, preliminary budget, as I mentioned, the I G A with Metro, the one point nine million that I G A is on the council agenda for next Tuesday night. The Oregon Parks Grant, seven hundred fifty, the council already approved that I G A. So both of those are in place, the local match is, well, what we represented in the project budgets, you know, but it's gonna be whatever the difference is to complete the project is gonna be the local funding. So the U R A project finance requires loans from the city because essentially the agency isn't credit worthy for any other lender to lend to it. So two hundred thousand, that's TIF back, there's the five million that I mentioned, that's non-TIF. Brownfields Fund loan from Business Oregon. Uh, the one point five that'll be TIF back for the trail construction. So that'll be eight point two, eight point two million dollars in total debt. There's three point three million of TIF capacity left. So the repayment of the, you, of, from the U R A to the city, the five million full faith and credit. The city is on the hook to pay that until the agency sells the property presumably. It was to purchase the real estate and clean it up. Proceeds to then repay to, you know, from sale of property, the U R A would then repay the city. Same thing for the one point five million dollar Brownfields loan. The city makes the monthly payments on that, the agency does not. So, you know, the agency will have to borrow again from the city, the pending one for the trail. And then, you know, I don't know what other development costs there ultimately may be that will need to be paid for by the agency once there's something deal struck with, whether it's capstone or some other future development. Yeah, okay. Yeah, so questions on the urban renewal?
Counsel Glantz?
I have a question, you, I might have alluded to it. It shows, it said a one point five million uh, trail that we had responsibility for. But then it said the local match was actually eight hundred and fifty thousand.
Yes, and both of those numbers are what were on the slides. We're loaning one point five million in the budget that was adopted from the Parks S B C fund to the general fund. And the general fund is then loaning that to the Urban Rural Agency to pay for the trail project as well as other costs that may not be part of the trail. I expect that we're gonna spend more than eight hundred and fifty thousand for the trail because that, that trail budget was developed back more than eighteen, twenty-four months ago, back during the grant cycle. And again, as I mentioned, we're gonna have to pay whatever the difference is to complete the trail because we have to do a final report with both Metro and the Oregon Parks Department uh, for both of those grant agreements that, that the city entered into under the I G As. The, the, the good news about those, those is that Metro has allowed the the Oregon Parks Department fund to also be counted toward, um, so we don't have to have separate matching funds. Uh, and so, you know, it's made it more flexible for us. But yeah, there, there's going to be that money, there's money that we've had to spend to get to this point. Again, Metro, the I G A with Metro hasn't yet been adopted. At the moment, the effective date is supposed to be November, November one. So any of the costs we've spent on engineering and worked with the railroad prior to that, the, the Urban Rural Agency has to pay for. But it can't come out of the grant funds. So that's a portion of what that difference is between those two. But I expect that eight fifty is going to be a million or more.
Yeah, just to add a little more information, a couple of months ago, we got our most recent engineer's estimation of cost to construct the trail. About, I think, three point seven million dollars, and then we add contingency on that. Um, and we have roughly two point seven million dollars from the state and Metro to pay for it. So the balance plus contingency is gonna come out of our pocket and our funds additionally. So that's kind of the total of like one point five is what we're conservatively planning on that we'll have to spend to complete the trail. Right now, just as a side note, last week, we got sixty percent design approval from New City Railroad, which is fabulous. Um, and we just have to get the ninety percent to them later this month for there to review, get that finished by February. We're still on track, having it ready to go out for bid sometime before mid-two thousand twenty-four. In fact, we just got the bid from our engineering firm to complete the bid package and all the permitting necessary for the Waterfront Trail. So we're all on track for that. And so it's kind of all conglomerating these certain funds together to come up with our portion.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Come on, there we go. So assessed value, okay, oh, I should have just waited until I had the slide rather than trying to remember it. There's the formula, Mr. Allen. So the taxable assessed value, last year's maximum assessed value plus three percent or real market value, whichever is lower. So again, this same chart that I showed earlier in working the last year, again, projecting for the, the coming year. The purse pension contributions, uh, you know, it's on a biennium, so this is the same slide information that I provided the last two meetings. Come on. You've got time with this clicker, yeah, okay. So this chart, I've shown you years before of what the, I was expecting the debt service fund balance to be, the contributions to it, the payoffs. Well, I've got that big, uh, you know, no sign or whatever that international symbol means. But basically because on last Friday, December first, you paid off these fifty-eight thousand dollars in interest, I think it was, as well as the five point, we were five million dollars of principal. So that full faith and credit obligation doesn't exist anymore on behalf of the city to the outside lenders. Your rural agency still owes the city the five million, but that remains to be seen when that, the city may ever collect that. Uh, general fund assumptions, again, the purse contribution rates that I mentioned there before. Wages growing at a five percent COLA based on our current contract and calculations based on the Western States C P I U that the contract has. It's, you know, gonna come in, I think, at five point two, and so it'll be five percent for the, the contract. Healthcare expenses, I've got plugged in at five percent, that's an average, sometimes it's higher, sometimes it's lower. Tourism services, eight percent, five percent the years, years after. Fire service contract grows at four point five is the current cap. I've got a ten percent bump in there in my projections for July first because that was similar to what happened ten years ago. When they went through the contract negotiations, there was quote a true up, is how it was referred to. And we went through a couple of years of, of big increases. I used the same formula for the police contracts, since we've never renewed it, to, you know, just bring reference, capital outlay. Property tax assumptions, you know, grow at three percent. I'm not trying to calculate out what exactly Fox Ridge might be. Apparently Fox Ridge is not on the tax rules because it's still in construction. Will it be all done and be on the tax rules by January one? Nope, it's not gonna be unless they work twenty-four hours a day and bring a gazillion workers online. So it's, you know, it's gonna be another year out at least. Uh, the enterprise zone exemptions expire, as Ray mentioned earlier, on Amazon. The cubes is the other one, the C and W distribution.
C N.
C N, yeah, sorry, thank you. Distribution, theirs is another year, you know, the timing wise, it expires the following year. And then the, the battery installation, that's just getting off the ground in terms of getting their permitting or grading. Two fifty million is the, the number on the project side. How much of that is gonna be taxable property? We'll have to wait and see because, you know, some of it's gonna be soft costs and so forth. And what it's gonna come on the tax rules as, how much of it is real property? Awful lot of that project is gonna be business personal property because it's not real estate. Because it's electrical equipment, as they refer to it, stacks of pizza boxes are these, uh, these batteries in racks. But it's supposed to be twenty-eight acres of bad bucks. So it's a big installation. Any case, all the revenue grows at four percent. This is the same chart as I covered earlier, that's how we get to the ten point, ten million, seven fifty ending balance. So this year, we start with that ten million, seven fifty budgeted expenditures, budgeted revenues, the budgeted preliminary net, adding the contingency back, the appropriate budgeted net of the three point six, which is, you know, better than what we had originally budgeted. So I'm now currently estimating seven point one as a ending fund balance. So the original four point one, that was what was based on the budget last April because we have all the numbers yet. That's what it would have been. Uh, where the star is, is where I'm expecting it's actually gonna come out. Which will incorporate into the next budget cycle. So yes, it's gonna come down, but it's not gonna come down as far as what we expect. That is, unless of course, the council goes wild and decides to spend all three million of that contingency. And that of course, it'd lower the ending fund balance. But I don't anticipate that that's going to occur this budget year. That was put in primarily under the expectation that we were gonna need to provide assistance in the economic, economic assistance, development costs, et cetera, for the urban rural area. Given where things are involved in the negotiations and conversations with the outlet mall, et cetera. Those things aren't gonna happen before June thirtieth. So that money isn't gonna be spent. I'm certainly going to plug that number in for next fiscal year because the hope is that we'll, they'll be able to get started in the coming fiscal year. But we have to wait too. Questions?
Paul Wilcox?
Uh, yes, uh, did I hear Eric correctly that if a development project isn't in operation on January first, they don't go on the tax rolls for that year?
Uh, the, in, in Oregon, the, the tax snapshot that the assessors have to use statewide is basically twelve oh one A M on January first. They're supposed to take a snapshot of property values across the state. You know, of course, for their own county, for the individual properties. So, you know, for your house, it isn't really quite as relevant because it's ongoing. But for new property, it makes a difference as to when is that property put in the service? Versus when is it still in construction in progress? And in Oregon, they, uh, the state provides two years worth of construction in progress tax deferral. They have to fill out paperwork and apply for it, et cetera. But if, you know, if the apartments aren't, they haven't received a certificate of occupancy, they aren't able to rent to people. It's not in service. And so from the tax assessor standpoint, it's not yet, uh, subject to taxation. Now, the land still is because the land was before they built the building, but the improvements aren't yet coming onto the tax rule. And then it's a little bit different on some of the commercial industrial rule. The timing's the same, but some of the particular rules. And then there's another almost identical set of waivers for construction in progress in the enterprise zone. And so that battery, uh, project that I just mentioned, referred to as BEST, Battery Energy Storage System. It's going to file a construction process exemption for this coming January one for whatever work they've already done. And just given their construction timeline, I doubt they will be in service a year from now, so they're probably gonna get another deferral. Then plus their three years of enterprise zone deferral. It's basically a five years out, which is what I factored into my, into my calculations for when their revenue come on board. It's the same as what happened with FedEx. FedEx only did a three year standard enterprise zone application, but they had two years of construction process deferral. So anyway, sorry, I rambled on there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Glantz?
I have a question on the three million contingency. So that was originally put in the twenty-three, twenty-four budget for U R A? I, I'm, I'm kinda confused, I feel like stuff kinda moved around there.
One of the reasons it was in there, we've always had a contingency amount in the general fund for just that contingency. It was higher in, in pre-pandemic years, it was generally a million dollars. During the pandemic, we increased it because there was so much uncertainty about the pandemic. The pandemic was over, so does it come down? Well, part of why we left it where it was, wasn't so much uncertainty about the pandemic, but uncertainty about what kind of assistance we might need to provide to the agency for whatever deal capstone might or might not wanna come try and propose. So it's, it's, again, it's no different than the contingency from other years. Staff can't touch it. We have to come to city council and ask for, essentially to remove it from contingency and put it into a spending category, which is typically capital expenditures or something, but.
And then, so it wasn't used for U R A this year? Or it was used for U R A as expected?
It wa, it was not, it's, it's all three million of it is still there. There'll be transfers at year end like there always is to deal with the budget overs and unders. But there's been no project request for transfer of contingency yet this fiscal year.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. M.
I have a question about the contingency, Aaron. So is there a minimum contingency that is just standard? It's gonna be a million dollars and then we build on it every year. Will it always be a million dollars or will it, is it tied to anything?
Contingency is, is basically options for the city council. Because if it's not in contingency and it's in unappropriate ending fund balance, the only way you can get to it is from a natural disaster. the only way you can get to it is from a natural disaster. And so putting money in contingencies, so that things come up over the course of the year, council has the option to make a decision. If you don't, their hands are tied. And council doesn't usually like it when I come and tell them no. So what's the right level? I mean, you know, would I, if we did the urban rural project and got it all done with Capstone, and, you know, the year after that, would I expect that the contingency level might drop to a million dollars? Probably, because there's still gonna be ongoing surprises that will come up that, you know, given the seventeen million dollar budget that is the general fund, there's gonna need to be some contingency. But, you know, I don't, I would not expect it needs to be three million indefinitely. It may be for several years, depending on the timing of that project, because, you know, I've been working on the Urban Rural Agency since two thousand and six, so I'm not gonna hold my breath that it's gonna get done next year.
Counsel Woodruff.
The five million that the U R A owes the city, is there a legal timeline on that, or could that just go on indefinitely?
That can go on indefinitely, it's based on a series, I want to say, should say series, based on a intergovernmental agreement between the Urban Rural Agency and the city. The Urban Rural Agency is obligated to repay the city. It is not obligated to repay the city until they sell, sell the real property. So they're not obligated to make payments on that until some portion of that real property that is not the trail gets sold to a private developer. Whether you sell all seventeen acres at one shot to one developer for a master plan, whether, you know, a new approach is taken and there's, it gets carved up into three different parcels, and, you know, we sell this piece off to a hoteler, or we sell this off to, you know, a apartment builder, and we sell this piece off to somebody else, I don't know.
Does the agency then make the decision, or who makes the decision, of how much to pay back at what time?
Well, it's gonna be governed by the parameters in that intergovernmental agreement, which I haven't looked at in several years. But ultimately, the agency directors are the city council. We'll have to take into account what's there. You know, it also depends on what the agency decides to do. It's the agency, because it has, unlike the city as an entity, the agency has the fair reuse value flexibility for real estate development and specific urban rural agencies. So we may decide from a commercial appraisal that the property is worth, you know, a million dollars an acre. We may decide, the city, the agency, the collective decision makers, may decide as part of a deal for redevelopment that they're going to sell it to this developer for fifty thousand an acre as part of the economic support to help make that project happen. The agency has that flexibility, whereas the city doesn't, which is one of the reasons why we structured it such that the agency purchased the real property. That, of course, then is gonna limit the amount of money that the agency has to repay the city. So could this evolve down through the end to where the agency never has the money to repay the city? Yeah. And that was part of the risks that we reviewed with council when the decision was made to borrow the five million dollars to buy the property and then to clean up the property. But we have to wait and see. Same thing for the million and a half dollar loan that the city is is repaying monthly to the Oregon Round fields fund. The agency, we have another very similar intergovernmental agreement between the city and the agency, where, you know, they're not obligated to repay on that until they sell the real property.
Thank you.
Counsel White.
Eric, I had a question on the slide show on the police and fire contract. Where you say ten, ten percent increase plus five percent per year. Can you go over that one one more time?
Find the right one here. That one? So right now, the, based on the current contract, four point five is the cap. So that's what I've got plugged in, under the assumption that, you know, given what inflation is, it's not gonna come in below the calculation, it's gonna hit the cap. And then I, because I, that that chart that I'm budgeting for, that I'm projecting for the general fund balance goes out five, whatever, years. So out beyond the current contract, that's what I'm referencing.
Okay. And then you you talked about status quo. Is that, would that include new hires in, or are you guys planning on? That might be a better question for Ray. Is there plans for more hiring this coming year? This coming budget cycle?
Yes, there are. Did you have a follow-up question? What are they? Oh, yes, I read your mind. Good question, Counsel White. Yes, we, at this point, we are planning on, one, parks employee, for sure. In fact, we've actually hired one right now, who was a temp hire for a number of years, who was excellent, and the job market finding an excellent one was really important. We anticipate there may be one retirement in parks, and so if we're not able to get that one position, they would take that spot. But with the addition of the Sandy River Trail and Park being constructed, the addition of the Offleek's Dog Park, with other needs in the park system, we felt that we needed one F T E there. We are also considering some amount of F T E increase in human resources. We've been doing for decades, tabular, with just one F T E generalist in human resources, and with the complications and changes in laws over the years, which never gets easier, given with feds and state, we are considering, I believe, a halftime.
And we gotta figure out the configuration with what Denise may decide to plan for her retirement, and what maybe a slot transition, hire a new person as a full-time, and have her transition out. There are, that's part of what I have to put together, and we'll share with the council and the budget committee in April, is, you know, literally pages of additional, essentially, labor law obligations that the city as an employer has, that we have to administer. And they just keep adding them on, primarily from the state, not as much on the federal side.
Denise is our full-time H R generalist. I just need to understand, I get a lot of requests from staff that we need new F T E in this position, this position we've nice to have. Yeah, more people would be nice to have to do more wonderful things, but we can only afford what we can afford. So when we come to you with F T E requests, I mean, the budget for next year, we only bring you the ones that we think are the most needed, most critical. And there's been a number that we have told staff, no, we're not gonna go to council, because we know that that is a issue for the budget committee. We know that with finances, once you hire somebody in a new position, you kind of enter into a marriage. And I want to make sure that we're generous with the people we hire, that we have the ability to keep them. And so when we make those requests, it is full understanding that we have a limited amount of resources. And whether it's general fund or exilate fund, that will also depend upon what we're doing.
Well, I brought that question up, because Chris Gorsick, Senator Gorsick, came in before council, and he spoke about the idea of possibly a ranger station in Troutdale or near Troutdale. And I've said for a long time that it seems like we're the park for a lot of other cities and really a region. And our parks get really overwhelmed, especially Glen Auto. But I think it's only fair that, you know, we, maybe we went to outside sources, kind of like we did for the River Trail. A lot of that money's coming from Metro and Forest Service and other agencies. And let's face it, they're, they're a big user down there. So it'd be, I think it'd behoove us to to kind of look that direction, because, you know, everyone's having a tighten their belt. We just saw, you know, what mortgage owners are facing. It gets harder every year. There doesn't ever just seem to be any thought for relief for our citizens. And I'm just looking for outside help, because it's something to think about, something to chew on. And, you know, the purpose of this meeting, I brought it up last time, was for this committee to give direction. So I want, I want to make sure that that's known with this group, that, you know, don't just have to ask questions, you can, you can say what's on your mind. That's the real purpose of this December meeting.
Right, and as I mentioned before, not to be flipper the idea, but I'd love to do things in Troutdale with other people's money. And I will talk to Senator Gorsick's office to find out. I'll talk to Jason, his chief of staff, and say, hmm, what are you talking about? Let's talk.
Yeah, they brought it up.
Yeah, I will ask them about that, because that would be wonderful, because we do have a state park right on the border, you know, right across from the river there.
Because we are facing some big hits this year. This is gonna be a tough year with police and fire increases, inflation. I feel like my money's worth about half what it was pre-pandemic, you know? And inflation doesn't take into consideration the packaging size has shrunk. You're buying less product for more money. So I think it's worse than the numbers may have shown here tonight. And we also got, we're gonna have another big hit, which is that Levy District. And I don't know if that's something you guys can talk about yet. But if you can, I'd like to know some preliminary numbers on what we might be facing, but I also don't wanna, you know, get in the weeds here tonight, just getting late. Something to think about, though. I got excited about, you know, when Eric said status quo. You know, I was like, oh, good.
That's the general trend. It's gonna be increasing all across the board in every department, but I suspect there's gonna be a need to deal with some selectively.
Right, as I've mentioned many times in these meetings, we have to think of the future. As I said in my introductory remarks, in the next year's budget, after next year's budget, the twenty-five, twenty-six budget, will be the first year of the new contracts for law enforcement in fire. And we gotta at least be thinking that we're gonna have increases. Freshwater's already started claiming that they're gonna hit us really hard, the three cities. They were starting hushing on that. We also know that we continue to have increases in Perks. I don't want to talk about that much, but we know that as tier-one people continue to, let's just say, fall off the roles, those will probably come down, but not till twenty-eight or twenty-nine. So we keep thinking that we've got to make sure we keep a good fund balance, so that we can weather those storms if they hit us and still keep good services to the citizens.
Counsel Woodruff.
Just throwing it out there, in the last couple of years, few years that I've been on budget, we keep talking and bringing up safety and asking, talking about a resource officer. And then we talk about how long it takes to get it on budget, and we talk about how long it takes to hire, and how long it takes to recruit. The first step is trying to get some, get it on our budget. And I know the next, early, right, the next come out is gonna be all along to, contract talks with Polon County. But then if we wait till those contract talks, and then we're gonna wait another year to start talking about a resource officer, then we're talking about three or four years down the road till we start actually getting a resource officer, in addition to Nick. So at some point, though, I think with our increased population in this one, we should have a serious conversation about trying to ask, see what that would take to have a new resource officer.
A great observation, that's something that we talked about in the Public Safety Working Group, and it's something we're gonna have to really work hard on as we approach next budget year and then the contract year after that. It's not technically an F T, excuse me, Gene, that's technically not an F T E, but a full-time resource deputy cost is about two hundred and thirty, two hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year, all in.
More like two sixty.
Oh, I'm gonna have Nick taking up coffee more often than one. Right, that's the caveat, that's the caveat. So, yeah, it's a big expense, but it is a annual expense. We're not necessarily married to that position, you know, beyond we're in financial issues, not to anticipate any financial issues, but those are talks we can add. There's also the option, I'm just gonna go ahead and just share, right, the conversation I had with Captain Azzo, our chief this morning, is currently our contract, we pay for a, essentially, a halftime person, two-quarter time people in the summer for the beach patrol, where we kind of modified that to make them more Swiss Army knife patrol in Troutdale. One of the options we talked about is maybe we only increase our F T E, the sheriff's office, half, and just get one full-time person all year long to complement our current resource deputy. And in the summer, we have that deputy focus on parks and Glen Auto, but then we still have that position for the rest of the year. So maybe we're only looking at a hundred and thirty thousand dollar increase, but actually get somebody that's much more flexible and usable all year long, so we can place that dedicated Troutdale. That's just the conversation we had this morning, is an option.
Use it instead of the regular.
Yeah.
Mr. Ben.
Yeah, just one other comment on the inflation or the C P I each month, that I'm sure you're all aware that that's cumulative. So if we've been having inflation for three years, January lets you say February's C P I got bad the last three years. So you might have four point eight, six point two, and seven point three. Get it, add them all together to get the real inflation, what's happening. Correct?
Yeah, that goes back to the issue that the rate of inflation is coming down, but the price level is still elevated, because of all those prior increases you're talking about. So it may stop going up as much next month, but it doesn't mean that it's going down from where it was.
Yeah, well, that's in line with keeping costs, because the citizens are dealing with that cumulative effect. And to get to what even Glenn was talking about, you know, we're getting hit with these constant increases. And they think, oh, it's down to three point seven, oh, great, well, yeah, but it was just really twenty-three. And so it's hard to then take on additional tax burdens to pay for additional things.
Like resource deputies?
Well, that's probably the easiest one to get by with me, because I was pretty much involved in giving it the first time, because of.
I'm just suggesting that every service that the public wants requires funds. And the challenge for the city is we're not in Meson, Odessa, Texas, where the city has oil wells on its property. All of our money comes from the citizens. So, you know, if citizens want us to spend more money on a service, they're the only people we have to go to.
I think there's just, overall, though, there's a general thinking pattern that a lot of people don't, don't see the cumulative effect. And so they're thinking, oh, it's only this, so something could be that, but it really has a much bigger impact on us.
I guess I would say, I think a lot of people are feeling the effect out there, especially those that are on fixed incomes. Because they're really getting squeezed, and they don't have an ability to pull in more income usually. So they're probably the ones that are feeling it the most. You look at it, it's like, everything that we look at, there is a need. And you can make an argument for how important that need is. And, you know, our job's to look at these things and prioritize them, because there's only so much money. And you look at it, and yes, we've got Amazon coming on, and that's a great thing, but we're talking about Batteries Plus, and that's not here yet. So I don't want to, you know, get into a position like we did with the Troutdale Energy Center, where we were talking about the money before the money actually came in, and that it didn't actually happen. But, and it could happen. But, I mean, we've got to look at what we've got in front of us, and we've got to do the best job that we can with those funds. And that's what the citizens expect us to do.
Counsel Glantz.
Yeah, I see the, you know, the assumption is to maintain current services, and I'm, and status quo, and to me, I would rather. And to me, I would rather see us have less growth. So, you know, not necessarily bring on new parks and functions and things that require more people to maintain them. Just because I'm still really concerned about the costs on fire and police coming up. And I'd like us to have options should we decide to, you know, be part of a tri-city or a separate district or something like that. I don't want us to be in a position that, well, the only thing we can do is re-sign and just, you know, cut in other areas in order to be able to have police and fire. Because quite frankly, that fire especially is pretty poor service right now. And the police, I would argue, I don't know that how long it's been since I've seen a police car in any of the neighborhoods. So I'm not sure that, I mean, I know we're in a lot, but I'm not sure the priorities for how what we pay for gets used are within our control and what we want.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I was going to say that I like Counsel Whitaker's suggestion. I'd like to see it brought up in consideration. However, I do want to point out that the question I'm going to be asking at the time is similar to what's being referred to here is, is how do we keep the officer predominantly within Troutdale so that we actually do get our money's worth? That if we pay for extra service, we get extra service. So it's something to be prepared for, to answer at that at that time.
Okay, just the last few slides. So the assumptions, which we've already talked about. Continuity, maintain dependable city utilities, look through the near-term disruptions. Ongoing goals, you know, city subject to labor cost increases, benefits, materials, supplies, services. Increases necessary to pay for infrastructure upgrade and maintenance. This is all saying that the costs are all going up. Even if we don't grow just to maintain what we have, the costs are going up. Current year, okay, you know, the URA is the most immediate challenge, but it's also undefined. So I, you know, there's near-term economic challenges and risks. You know, it's generally believed that come 2025, which is, you know, what, 14, 13 months away, that the economy will be recovering from whatever recession does or doesn't occur next year. But that remains to be seen. So that's questions, meeting wrap-up. Some form and update. Glance at next year, get you talking, thinking about April. And so get ready for adjourned any comments. And then just as I always want to plug, make sure you make a note as to when we're going to get together again because you so love to listen to me yammer. So in any case, I will turn it back to the chair for any other closing comments from him and anyone else.
Okay, I think we've gotten everything that we needed to hear tonight. I think now it's more of, you know, are we good with the direction that we're going? Is there something else that we're going to need for April? I guess that's really kind of the burning question. We've got some things that are on the burner. What are we doing with police and fire? Those are unknown at this point. And I will just say for the record, I'm, I don't advocate for paying more and getting less. I never think that's a good idea, but it's something that we're going to have to do collectively, and it's a big deal. Whether we can do that or not, I think you would agree, Randy, is unknown at this point in time.
It's unknown, but just know that we've been having discussions here inside the Work for Public Safety Working Group. Ray's had numerous discussions with the city managers group. I had a discussion as early as today with, or as, yeah, as early as today with the other mayors in Mollum County, or I'm sorry, East County. And it's discussions that we've been having, and the Public Safety Working Group has done a really good job of chewing those topics up and coming up with a, an agenda for next meeting, right? Correct? Yeah, next meeting, as far as direction that we're hoping counsel will take, moving forward with what we should do with regards to police and fire. Even though both are separate and separate contracts and separate governmental entities, it's, we're facing the same challenges with both contracts. So it's going to be a tall task and we're going to have to hit the ground running. It's not that we haven't done anything up until next council meeting and we're waiting till the last minute. It's just we've tried, we've been trying to cross our Ts and dot our Is with what we were going to come to council with and with a full packet of information. So if you have more questions tonight based on those two things, come to council next week. We'll have a good discussion moving forward.
Yeah, that was just a tease to make sure everybody comes back every time.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. The same bat time on the same bat channel.
Counsel White.
You know, on that subject, Tanny and myself were involved with others on the fire contract. We're part of the negotiation team. And I think what helped us the most is we we came up with a plan to have our own fire with the three cities. And it didn't work out, but it really is a great negotiation tactic to have have another option available. And I think maybe we should do that with the idea, you know, we have the, you have any park rangers? And they also service Lewis and Clark. There's quite a few of them. Might be a lot cheaper to contract a park ranger maybe for Glen Auto Park rather than a full-blown sheriff at those kind of figures that Eric's talking about. You know, when we hired Nick, it was like $200,000 a year. It's gone up to $260,000. It's just that that's outrageous. So we got to look at different options and have a backup plan. Otherwise, we will be stuck like Sandy's saying. We won't have any other choice. It'll be too late and we're just going to have to sign, sign on the dotted line.
As a preview for next Tuesday, just as a preview, that is, one of the options is to consider non-sworn armed individuals that can be used at a cheaper cost to enhance security in Troutdale.
I would agree with Counsel White. I think that for fire, at least, we should have that secondary plan. And we should consider it within our budget. And the reason why we'd need to do that is maybe some initial upfront cost that you do initially, but you won't have later on. And if you don't have a new budget, it's not an option. So we need to take that into consideration. You know, if you want to do fire and police, that's fine.
I guess I would just say, from a budgetary standpoint, I don't believe you could put the upfront cost for fire into the budget. I think it would implode. I think it's going to take a fire district, it's going to take some other thing to get enough revenue in to make that happen. I appreciate what you're saying. I just think it's too much capital coming at you at one time. You're going to have to come up with another source for it.
Or bond.
Yeah.
You do have your options.
Right.
Okay, just think about what we should do.
Counsel Whitaker.
I'll just say I hope that we all come back in April having a spirited discussion, not just being talked back, talked to, and this is, this is the budget, this is what we have. And this is, I hope we can have a discussion around the budget to be able to take in, take out, and all of us feel comfortable at the end of the day when we leave and feel good about the budget that we have.
The Budget Committee is certainly free to make whatever changes are allowed within the local budget law. The local budget law also requires city management to present a complete budget. So, yes, you are going to get talked to. You are going to be presenting the budget.
Yes, yes.
And if you want to make changes to it, then of course the Budget Committee is free to do that. That's happened at differing quantities of, during different years, going back over time. Some years, there's not much of a change. Some years, there's a controversial item or two. And I don't remember, three or four years ago, there was an item that staff had put in the budget because we thought counsel wanted it, and the Budget Committee took it out and also put it back in, but not. So, you know, I mean, where the staff is just attempting to implement what we believe we understand the priorities are. But this is part of why the Budget Committee has both citizen numbers and electives is to try and ensure that there's a broader community perspective brought to the allocation of the resources.
That's good.
I will say this. I think over the years at Troutdale, we've tried to be fiscally responsible. I I do believe that. And I also think that we've gotten away from the, well, we'll just put it in there for $100,000, even though there's no way it's going to cost that much. We've tried to get away from that. We've tried to say, okay, what is it going to cost? And going with a number that we all feel a little bit better about is a little bit more accurate. And then also too, because I see this a lot, come April, everybody's out in their cars, going somewhere, spending the rest of the money in the budget. And we also try not to do that either. We've tried to do some things to make us better as a city and make us more fiscally responsible. But with that said, there's only so much money to go around. And I think with the things that we're facing, I know it's Christmas time, but you got urban renewal, you got possible staff additions, you've got police and fire contracts to look at, and you've got a bunch of other needs within the city. There's only so much money to go around. And the task for us is going to be, what's important to you? What's important to your neighbors? What's important to the community that you live in? And that's what we need to be advocating for because I don't think we're going to be able to do everything. And there's probably going to be a few things that are going to be in the budget that may not make it. And that may or may not happen, and that'll be okay one way or the other, if it does or it doesn't. But those are decisions that this group is going to have to make and is going to have to live with. And I don't like it when we put those on staff. And I actually don't even like it when we do that to the council either. I think we need to make those decisions as much as we can, and we need to own them. We need to say we did this and this is why we did it. Now, it's one thing to pass a budget and say, okay, you guys figure it out. That's not really, frankly, it's not fair in that.
Okay, Counsel White.
One other question with the police contract. Will this building lease be renewed as part of that or is that a separate?
Well, it's a separate association, but they go hand in hand because they, they don't really have any place else to go. And the citizens of Troutdale do provide, do get an amazing value in having the the whole headquarters for the patrol division for the whole county right here downtown. Because all the deputies are going to the gorge or Savvy's Island. They all come here and they drive through here to go to those other places. So we have good number of backup here. We also are allowed to have this building open 24/7, which is a real good resource for our citizens that we did not have before.
That's a nice spin on it, right? But.
No, but we have advantages to us too. It's not just, yeah.
The way I look at it is, you know, we're providing a countywide service. And only Troutdale is paying for this building, and we're breaking even on it after 50 years.
You know what?
We'll break even in 50 years, something like that.
Here's another preview for next week.
Glenn, you're taking all the previews.
I will save it.
There, we have, we did talk, didn't we, Gordon, Mayor, we talked about making sure that we get fair value for this building. We talked about it, because this is our leverage.
We did. This, I wouldn't, I wouldn't not call it a bargaining chip, but it's, it's, it's a, it's a good size negotiation tool that we have is this, this house for our police officers.
Okay. Yeah, when Rasham or Mollum County charges us for services they provide and FTEs and stuff, they calculate down to every minute and a nap and tenth of an hour that HR spends worrying about the employees that work for us. You know, it's, so we should do the same when it comes to leasing this program.
Yep, absolutely.
And so.
And I do agree, there's a value, but like McDonald's has a drive-through too.
It's also open 24 hours.
Ms. Brown.
I think the key point is, we don't know what the the near future is going to be like. Let's just make sure that the budget has options that our council can consider. Let's not, let's not tire ourselves out.
Another point, another position, I should say. You Zoomers, you guys are awfully quiet. Okay, any comments or questions? Oh, here she comes. Counsel Glantz.
I've been asked some questions. I haven't been quiet.
Okay, any comments?
Yeah, I just want to thank you, Tanny, for your willingness to continue to serve as chair and Victoria's vice chair.
Sure.
I think this is one of the better meetings we've had in a while.
Thank you. It's not us, right, Victoria? We didn't do it. Anything, Mr. Wilcox?
No, nothing else. Nothing else. Thank you.
All right. And Counsel Ripma.
I, nothing else. Thanks. It's been interesting.
Okay, and so, okay, go ahead. Yeah, you can make yours. What's that?
I said it's not my agenda, right?
Mr. Positive, Christmas elf. It's always important to remember, all great valid points, but the truth is, on our budget, we are doing well. If you look at our ending fund balance for all funds, we've grown from 28 million to over 45 million in the last three years. Our general fund ending balance, which pays for the law enforcement fire, has gone from $4.7 million three years ago to almost $11 million at the end of last quarter year. So we are continuing to grow in our ending fund balances, which I call our savings, which drives Eric crazy because that's not technically correct. But I will also add that concerns and comments that many of you made tonight about being cautious, about being concerned about the future, is why we have such a good ending fund balance because we have been very cautious. And that's a great sign that the city is doing well. So I just want to remember that, you know, the proof of your management is in our ending fund balances growing every single year for a long time. And that's a great, provides us a stability that we need to continue services. That was my only comment.
And I was going to say, you know, when you you look at this, it it sounds a little doom and gloom sometimes because of our situation with resources and contracts and some things. But I will tell you, there's a lot of cities that would love to have our situation, income and expenses. But there's also, there's some cities out there that thank God they don't. And so we just have to keep doing a good job and we have to do the best we can with what we have and make tough decisions when necessary. So it sounds like we're going to be looking at something that's going to be similar to status quo and close to balance and all that, right?
Yeah, like I said, the only FTE right now we're likely to have is one FTE in parks and then potential half FTE in human resources. I still, I don't have the input from all the department heads yet. But again, I always start with, you got to convince me because I got to convince them. So it doesn't come to you unless there's a robust basis for it. And just the fund ones especially, yeah, careful I have because that's the one that we use for fire release.
Okay, anybody else have anything before we wrap up? You guys all good?
Second.
All right. Motion by Counsel White, second by Mayor Lauer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much. We will see you in April. Maybe before.